Good evening, everybody. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the City of Falls Church, and I'll be walking through a number of slides tonight, hopefully briskly, so that there can be comments and questions. But before we get started, let me, if I may, Mayor Tarter, could I turn it over to you for you to make some introductory and welcoming remarks?
Sure. Thank you, Wyatt. I did just want to welcome everyone and thank you all for joining us this evening. I know I've got some city council members on here this evening. I saw Carolyn Leon, and I'm not sure if others, Councilman Snyder and Hiscott had work and city obligations. But I know council is very interested in your feedback, whether it's tonight, whether it's by personal correspondence, phone calls, or attending one of our public hearings coming up. We'd love to hear more from you directly. I just wanted to say a few kind of precatory remarks. I know this has been a challenging year, and the past couple of years have been challenging, not just with COVID, but inflation has really spiked up, which has cut into people's purchasing power, and which in turn has led to some pretty significant increases in assessments. And I know they're kind of all over the board, and maybe some people, it's less than others, but there are plenty of folks in this town who've had 30% assessment increases, which really, we know that's difficult and challenging. And I would just say to anyone who has an assessment that you think is not justified or not fair, you are welcome to make an appeal, although it needs to be made in a timely fashion. So I would suggest you consult the city website for further details. But just some of the things that we're dealing with this year, again, inflation is running very high. There's a lot of turnover now with employees. I'm sure you've heard about, you know, many of the folks who are changing jobs and careers and the like, and so that's affecting us here in the city as well. And so employee turnover is something we want to address and nip in the bud. And so salaries are something we're considering and working on as well to make sure they're competitive for the area. We've also fortunately had a number, received a number of grants, which may take a little bit of the sting out of some of the things we want to spend money on, such as stormwater, you know, flooding, traffic, and street improvements. But nonetheless, there are a number of priorities that we're trying to address this year. Of course, schools, as always, are one of our top priorities, but not just that. It's things like equity, affordable housing, also traffic calming, pedestrian safety, bike safety. So there are a number of competing interests that we're trying to all balance, and including the tax rate. And we know how that can take a bite out of a lot of folks' personal finances. So again, we're working on all those things, trying to balance the various interests of people here in this city, but we want to hear from you. So we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say this evening, and thank you so much for participating. With that, Wyatt, I'll just go turn it back over to you, but thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Tarter, and we are working hard on the budget process right now. As the mayor noted, we'll have a town hall meet, I mean, a public hearing on next Monday, on the 25th of April. And we're also looking for council to have another public hearing, the last public hearing on May 2nd. And that's the night that the council is scheduled to take action on the budget. So what tonight is all about is getting information out to the public and also getting your comments and questions and suggestions as well. So I'm, let me, if I could, just make a couple of quick introductions. We do have Cindy Mester as the deputy city manager. She takes the lead in the development of our capital improvements program. Karen Bawa is our finance director. She's on the call as well. Kristin Michael is the chief operating officer for the schools, and she is on the call tonight to answer any questions that might come up about the school budget. And Susan Finirelli is our director of communications. Susan, thank you. When we get to Q and A, we'll look to you to help kind of moderate that or just, you know, call folks out as you raise your hands. If you can figure out how to do that on Teams or put something in the chat, and Susan will make sure that you're recognized and have a chance to ask your question in person. Or if you prefer, we can read it out loud and then try to respond that way. So let's get started. I do have the slides that really have, what we've been using as we've gone through a number of town halls and public meetings and presentations on this. I'll try to do it briskly, and then we can circle back for questions. We do have some slides also on the commercial and industrial tax, which was proposed. And I will sort of maybe cut to the chase on that. The council has asked, I think, a lot of very direct questions about that, and I think at this point, it is my understanding that the council is not prepared to support that at the present time in this fiscal year. And so, but I will have a slide on that, and we'd be happy to answer questions on that as well. We also want to talk about the car tax, which hasn't gotten quite as much publicity, but we have some proposals and some changes relative to initial presentations on that. So as the mayor noted, it's a time of a lot of dynamism and change in the nation and in the City of Falls Church. And so we've been trying, as we built this budget, we were trying to do, trying to kind of do two big things. One is to continue with a lot of the really important and transformative projects that are going on in the city. And that includes private investment in the city, but it also improves really important transportation-related grants that we're working to administer right now. For instance, the South Washington Street improvements that are almost complete. That's an example of a over $7 million grant that we've gotten from state and federal sources. And we have other similar projects that will be going on throughout the city. So doing those transformational projects while at the same time doing the basics of government competently and well. And that means, you know, making sure we're processing building permits in a timely way, making sure that the city is safe with appropriate public safety and taking care of our workforce. As the mayor noted, we, like everybody, experience a lot of change in our workforce, and we need to make investments in that if we're going to be able to accomplish the goals of the city. So those are some of the key focuses that we're trying to accomplish in this year's budget. The proposed budget does reduce the real estate tax rate by eight and a half cents, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Assessments are growing up and going up, and so that gives us room to be able to do that. And the budget also has $1,020,000, which is the equivalent of two cents on the tax rate for contingency. And that was really intended so that as the council listened to the public through the process, there was room and flexibility to address comments as they come up. So this is a fairly, can everybody see the slides okay before I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you, Susan. This does have a lot of numbers on it. I'm just going to hit kind of the bottom line. What we're proposing is a budget for city and schools that is 100, just, well, it's $112,644,000. And that's a 7.6% increase over last year. Now, that does include use of grant funds and some special funds. And so our base operating budgets up here for general government is growing just about 6%, and the school budget is growing just about 6.3%. And so those are larger growth rates than we've had in years past, and that's partly because we were really cut budgets rather significantly in the early days of the pandemic, but also we are experiencing a lot of cost pressure, along with a lot of our businesses and households throughout the city. This pie chart is just an overview, so people are kind of basically oriented about where your tax dollars go. So education is 42% of the general fund budget. Debt service is 12% of the budget, with the largest portion of that going to fund our schools. Public safety is the second largest component of the budget, and that includes police and fire. Public Works taking care of all of our streets and infrastructure and buildings is 6% of the budget. Wreck and Parks, 5%. Health and Human Services, 4%. And building permits and planning activity is about 4%. So that's just a quick overview of how the money is split up in the various different functions of the city. Now, I'm going to hit kind of quickly on a couple of initiatives that are funded in this budget. And one is an investment in public safety and having two additional police officers funded in the budget. And that is in response to some changes we made over the pandemic and in response to the Use of Force Review Committee to convert some uniform positions to civilian positions. And we restored those uniform positions in this budget, so we maintain our 34 uniformed officers. This will allow us to have an officer in the schools, a school resource officer, and more police dedicated solely to traffic enforcement. A really big part of this year's budget is trying to address growth in the city in a safe and effective manner. We have six new positions in the budget that are entirely funded with building permit fees, and those are intended to shorten permit review times, allow walkthrough permitting for smaller projects, but also make sure that these big projects, we've got about a million square feet that will be under construction starting in about a month, up at the high school with the West Falls project, to make sure that that is done safely and effectively. Mobility and accessibility. So the next two slides are about transportation. And I mentioned, and the mayor mentioned, we have significant investments in transportation in the city. So in this, in the budget is dollars for the Park Avenue Great Streets project, which will underground utility wires from the library all the way to the State Theater, and also install brick sidewalks, wider sidewalks, street furniture, and streetscape and trees. There's a lot of interest in being able to get safely to school. And two years ago, we applied for a grant to have a safer bike path and pedestrian way along Shreve Road in Fairfax County. So that one option for students is to go down the WOD and then take a right on Shreve Road and have a nice, safe route on Shreve Road up closer to the campus. Other projects, the greening of Lincoln is a pretty high-profile project that came out of a petition from residents on Lincoln for traffic calming. And we're also going to be doing stormwater projects on Lincoln that will help the entire watershed, including the residents down on West Columbia and Shadow Walk, by trying to retain some of the water with green infrastructure up on higher in the watershed on Lincoln. And a big share of our ARPA dollars are going for sidewalk construction, bus shelters, and neighborhood traffic calming throughout the city. So that's a major investment in the coming year as well. Some projects that are kind of even ahead of those projects just listed, intersection improvements at North Washington and Columbia Street. Broad Street, we have hawk signals planned at three locations on Broad Street so that people can press a button, get a signal, so that they can cross the street safely. We have certain stretches of Broad Street where you have to walk a long ways before you can get a safe crossing, and this is intended to address that. We want to finish out the WOD expansion with the crossings over the streets, and that's a grant-funded project. And then we have a roundabout project planned at Annandale and South Maple, which is intended to both improve throughput in that intersection, but also improve pedestrian and bicycle safety through that intersection. Now shifting to some of the measures for equity and inclusiveness. The mayor mentioned in his introductory remarks about affordable housing. We've been very successful in getting grants that Cindy is helping us administer and Dana Lewis and our housing staff through the Amazon Reach program. But we're matching that with $100,000 out of the operating budget on a sustained basis, and then other key investments, a lot of which are using deploying our ARPA dollars. Downtown improvements, we use a portion of the hotel tax for the flower baskets and banners and taking care of Mr. Brown's Park and things like that. We'll continue to do that in the budget, make investments in our parks. And we're also working to make sure that our businesses can recover effectively from the COVID pandemic, and we're using the America Rescue Plan dollars again in FY '23 in the amount of $500,000 to help with that. Elections with early voting have become more administrative tasks with that, and so we're fortifying a registrar with some additional staff resources that they've requested there. That's a core investment in basic services. In terms of investment in the workforce, what we are planning is a 4% across the board merit increase for employees. We are in the midst of a compensation study, and that, we have a reserve to address any compensation issues that might come out of that study. We're also making new investments that have been cut during the pandemic for training and professional development. But again, this is really a key thing for us to invest in. Just as two examples, at one point during the last year, we were down one-third of our police department. We've since hired back, and so we're close to full force in our police department. But that's just an indication of how much dynamism there is in the labor market. And in Public Works, our operations division is still below 50% fully staffed with vacancies in that area. So we have tried to address compensation in that area and retention, and we're working very hard to recruit back. But, you know, we all experienced it this year with leaves being very late being picked up, and that's a direct correlation with us being understaffed in our public works department. So a couple of key, other key things we're using ARPA dollars for. I mentioned the sidewalks and bus stations, some investments in our community center. But I also just want to note that the council has already allocated $7 million to address flooding in the city. And so these are the Stormwater Task Force, six priority project recommendations. And we'll be able to use these federal dollars to carry those projects out in the coming. We'll be starting construction on those this year, and they will continue on for about three years after that. We've also, in terms of the council's deliberation through requests that have come up through HSAC and other boards and commissions, we are using ARPA dollars to meet community needs, including one working with Welcoming Falls Church for the resettlement of refugees from around the world so that they can have rental assistance and be able to make a home in the City of Falls Church. Now I'm going to shift to revenues, and again, I'll go pretty briskly through this, but this shows where the money comes from, and the lion's share does come from real estate taxes on residential properties. 16% comes from real estate taxes on commercial properties. And then this sort of part of the pie is about 25% of the budget, and these are all business taxes, like sales taxes, meals taxes, business licenses, and personal property taxes. And then the final 20% are mostly either state and federal dollars or fees for service, like building permits and wreck and parks fees. So assessed values, as the mayor noted, we are experiencing a lot of market appreciation in the residential sector. So overall, a 13.7% growth in the residential sector with the largest impacting single-family homes. Apartments also are experiencing a lot of growth in assessed value. Commercial has remained relatively flat. A commercial declined during the COVID period and is making a small bounce back. Overall, a total assessed value in the city is now over $5.1 billion. And this is a very significant assessed value growth in this past year. We also do have significant new construction, so this is a portion of, sort of the last little bit of the Founder's Road project, but also construction that's happening out in our neighborhoods. So as we noted at the outset, the proposed rate is $1.23 and a half cents, or an eight and a half cent reduction. But even with that reduction, which is a significant reduction for homeowners, there still is about a 6% increase on the average tax bill with that tax rate reduction. The council is working through options to expand eligibility for those who seek tax relief if they're qualified because either of their age for seniors, but also for veterans and persons with disabilities. And so we're looking at expanding the eligibility of, and hopefully you all can see this chart and the numbers in it. But currently, if you have an income from zero to $41,000, you can have 100% real estate relief, and that's being expanded by $20,000 to $60,000, or this is the proposal that's on the table. And similar increases in eligibility throughout the various different income levels, and also the deferral piece, expanding some of the dollar ranges for deferral. So as we work this through, is something just to pay close attention to if you are eligible. And the city treasurer, I think, really does an excellent job working with their seniors and those who are eligible to make sure they're aware of this benefit and that they can walk through the process to apply for it and get this benefit. As I mentioned at the beginning with the commercial and industrial tax, this is something that I brought forward as a proposal to have a tax of five cents that would apply to commercial properties only. That would generate $420,000 for transportation projects. Many of our peer jurisdictions in the region have adopted a similar tax at the rate of 12 and a half cents and have for years. We've been discussing this with our business partners in the city, and so far, it is kind of my read of the situation. The city council will be the final decider, but that there is a lack of support for that proposal at this time has been expressed by individual members of city council. There will be a consideration of this on Monday night, the 25th. And so the city council will make a decision as to whether this will proceed this year or not next Monday. And then a last note on car taxes or on taxes. We are experiencing pretty significant assessed value increases because of supply chain disruptions. And so what we're proposing there is to reduce the car tax by 70 cents. So the rate would be $4.30 per $100 of assessed value. And so the council will consider that, file action on that on May 2nd, along with the rest of the budget. Two last notes on the Stormwater Fund. We are proposing a 3% increase in that fee, which would be about $7 per year for the average homeowner, and that's really just to help us stay up with inflation on the stormwater side. As I mentioned earlier, we have $7 million in federal dollars going for the six major flood control projects or flood mitigation projects that were identified by the Stormwater Task Force. And then similarly, in the Sanitary Sewer Fund, we're proposing a 3% increase to keep up with inflation in that area. We haven't raised the sewer fees since 2016, and this would be about a $3.66 increase per quarter for your average residential bill. So that's a quick summary, and now we'll open the floor for questions and comments, and really appreciate everyone's attention to this and look forward to comments. And I'll kind of freeze the frame on the schedule, just so you're aware of the next steps in the process. So Susan, let me ask you to help us explain to people how they can raise their hand and what they should do if they want to speak out.
Absolutely, and I'm going to navigate to questions that were emailed to us today. But if anyone here has a question, please feel free to do one of a couple of things. You can use MS Teams feature to raise your hand. Depends on if you're on your phone or in your browser. You should see a reaction where you can raise your hand. Feel free to do that, and then we'll call on you. Can ask your question. If you're feeling a little bit shy tonight, feel free to type in your question in the chat, and we'll be happy to read that aloud for you. So let me navigate over to that question. It is not letting me, of course. All right, does anyone have questions right now while I try to get to that emailed question? Okay, all right. Well, let me just mute my mic so you don't have to hear all those dings, and let me try to get to that email question.
And there is one chat question as well, Susan and Wyatt.
Oh, I didn't see that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Cindy. Okay. Oh, hello, Tina. I'm so glad you're here tonight. Okay, her question is, if the new tax relief program is adopted, would it be reflected in the number one payment? Or would it be next year? And so, I'm sorry, would it be reflected in this December's payment or June of 2023? Thanks, Tina.
Tina, that is a good question, and I might have to get back with you on that because the treasurer needs to, you know, have time to get the applications in. I think our goal would be to have it eligible for the December payment and the June payment. And so that's what we would try to do, but I do need to kind of follow up with the treasurer to make sure that we could execute that.
Thank you, and I am able to get to the email questions. All right, this is from John Ward, who's on Riley Street. He writes in two questions, so we'll take them one at a time. Let's see, "By the end of fiscal year 2023, Arlington County plans to have 100% of its government electricity use covered by purchases of off-site and onsite solar power and other high-quality renewable energy certificates. This and other sustainability programs inside government and throughout the community have been driven by the Arlington Initiative to Rethink Energy." Arlington's proposed budget would increase that agency from eight full-time employees to 10. Presumably, due to our smaller size and the lack of overarching climate and energy plan, there have not been, there's not been proportional progress here in the city. Page 56 of the budget lists an energy manager as an unfunded need. Since a full-time, for this, apologies, since a full-time employee for this position is not proposed for the coming fiscal year and may remain unfunded beyond that, would you consider negotiating MOUs with Arlington to share the cost and services of such a position? I hope you caught all that. Happy to repeat anything, Wyatt, or whomever can address that.
Well, it's a really important question, and I know Cindy will have information that I think she can add in response to this question. But I would just say, one, we do, you know, we do look to Arlington as a very useful ally. Their fresh air program and many of the things they've been doing are things that we can all learn from. The city has also taken, you know, I think, good and effective steps on our own with our own ability to, the promotion that we've had of solar power in the city, the ability to buy recs or electricity from renewable services, sources throughout our community, and our efforts to convert ultimately to an electric fleet. We've been doing biofuels for a long time, but converting to an electric fleet is something that we are trying to take steps in, as well as those vehicles become available for the types of needs that we have in our fleet. In terms of the purchase of electricity, Cindy, anything you would like to add to that?
Sure. Thank you, Wyatt. We definitely are looking at recs and other ways to be energy efficient, and we just put in a federal grant for Green Fleet, which would be both EV and hybrid, depending on the functional needs of Public Works. To the specific question about staffing and coordinating with Arlington, one, we're certainly looking at their program and initiative because we can learn best practices, as Mr. Shields indicated. We do have money, and we're starting, we're just executing the contract with, through a purchase agreement through Council of Governments to start our energy plan. So for the specific questions that were raised, I think we need to finish the energy plan and see what the recommendations are, and based on that, then we could look at staffing needs, contracting needs, partnerships with Arlington and other Northern Virginia partners, like through the Regional Commission. So staff recommendation, let's do the plan, see the recommendations, and then either look at a mid-year budget amendment or build it into the FY '24 budget. We are working really closely with Dominion. We have a CIP project for LED lights. We're working with Smart City. So we've got a lot of initiatives, but I think that core plan, very strategically minded with some recommendations, is an important foundation for us to have and then build from.
So we go to the next question. Mr. Ward had one more question, this about a master bike plan. A recent report by the Council of Governments summarized the plans of local jurisdictions to add and improve bike lanes and paths. With well over 1,000 miles of projects listed, none were in Falls Church. This may be because the most recent master bike plan is dated 2015. Does the proposed budget include staff hours to update the master bike plan? And if so, when should we expect to see that?
So what we do have in the works is a partnership with Virginia Tech, where we will have a project with Virginia Tech to update our bike master plan. And so that is something that we will be getting underway this summer. And so um, that is uh, something that we will be getting underway this summer. And it is a need, um, and, and I think probably the most recognizable need is a safe route to school for students to ride bikes up to Meridian High School and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. And uh, we are on the 10-acre site. There's gonna be a really good pedestrian and bicycle track that will be separated from traffic. Uh, we have the Shreve Road project that I mentioned earlier, but you know, we, we've gotta have uh, better ways for students to get up to Haycock Road and then across Haycock Road uh, to be able to ax- the new, access the new facilities that will be built along Mustang Alley. So um, it's a, it's really an important area. I think it's a high priority for the city council. And our plan is to um, is to partner with Virginia Tech and have a, have a uh, study uh, with them over the summer months. And this one, Cindy, with your work on the C I P, anything you'd, you would like to add on this one as well?
Yeah, I did want to note that it is with the graduate uh, class that really focuses on multimodal and bike and pedestrian, so that's a plus. It will also include, uh, besides updating our bike master plan, a look at protected bike lanes because that wasn't considered really during the 2015 time. And so that's where can it happen safely, et cetera, are there options? So that it'll be included in that. And I think that will help feed into the ARPA money that we have designated for the crosswalk, sidewalk, pedestrian accessibility and safety that Mr. Shields mentioned earlier. And we also just put in a federal grant uh, for additional money to parallel that, that we're hoping uh, through the community request appropriations process, we can get some additional money. Having money's helpful when you have a plan because then you know what the uh, implementation is, and that fills directly into our capital planning efforts.
Thank you. We have another question in the chat from Tina. Uh, what is the average cost per student this year? In the past, it's been in the 18,000 to 19,000 range. Uh, I'm not sure if we have someone from the schools or Wyatt knows that. You are muted Wyatt.
I'm sorry. Uh, Kristen Michael is on the call. Kristen, are you able to, to speak to that question?
Yes, I'm just opening that page right now, my budget book. Just give me one second.
Thank you, and I'll reiterate that if anyone else has a question, feel free to type it in the chat, or you can raise your hand through the Teams platform, and we will call on you. And this uh, this recording will be available on the website tomorrow, along with Wyatt's PowerPoint.
So thank you for the question. In terms of the cost per pupil, um, in our FY23 advertised budget, the cost per pupil is $22,767.
Great, thank you. All right, I am not seeing any hands raised, uh, but I definitely want to give people a, a few moments in case they're formulating a question or typing. Um, and I'm gonna check that email one more time, see if any others have come in. Nope. All right, last call for questions. We would love to hear from you. Oh, here we go. All right. Oh, Tina had a comment. Holy smokes, more reason to keep seniors in their homes and help the budget. Thanks Tina. All right. I think those are all the questions, going once, going twice. All right, thanks everyone.
Well, thank you, Susan, and uh, everybody, thank you all for tuning in uh, tonight on a Thursday night, a lovely evening in April. We will have our uh, public hearing on Monday, the 25th, and all, of course, are welcome to that. Um, I do think, just to re- reiterate some of the main themes of this year's budget, we do have investments in, in core government services. Um, and we also are continuing the big transformative projects, and so many of them are in the area of uh, affordable housing and in transportation. And um, and we've been very successful as, as a community, uh, with a lot of uh, good work by staff, um, but also really good advocacy by the city council and by uh, resident groups to bring in federal and state funding, um, in intelligent and well-planned ways to help the community. So we've got about $7 million in transportation plan, plan for next year, uh, which were listed in this presentation, and really remarkably about 70 million over the six-year planning horizon of, of transportation projects. And in the area of affordable housing, uh, we're working to administer two $3.7 million grants from Amazon Reach, so $7 million in investments in preserving or building new affordable housing in the city. So it's pretty, pretty exciting that we have those opportunities. And uh, really, the, the key thing for us is to work together and to execute those projects effectively and well, and uh, and deliver for the community. So um, if there aren't any more questions, again, thank you all for taking time and um, and uh, look forward to hearing any emails or other communications throughout the budget process. Again, public hearing on Monday, the 25th, and final consideration on Monday, May 2nd. Thanks, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Stay safe.